Welcome, everybody, to tonight's council meeting. So first up is roll call.
Brewster?
Here.
Walters?
Gordon?
Here.
Ewer?
Here.
Benner?
Here.
Pardon?
Crum?
Here.
Thompson?
All right, tonight's application will begin by Jennifer Jones, Angel of United Methodist Church.
Let us pray. Lord, we do thank you. We thank you for this evening and this time to come together. We thank you, Lord, for this town and for each person gathered in this room that is trying to do your work and to make this town and community the best that we can. Lord, we ask that you would continue to be our guide and our blessing as we work through this year. We pray all of this in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have a presentation and approval of minutes. The eight minutes of December 30th, 2024 for Councilmember Benner.
I make emotionally approve the minutes of the December 30th, 2024 business meeting.
Second.
Motion on second to approve the minutes of December 30th, 2024. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Same.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
All right, next we have item one, public comment about A, Cynthia Molls. If you want to tell your address in about five minutes.
Okay. I live at 333 Mimosa Drive here in Hazsville. My family and I moved here recently, a little over a year ago. We purchased a home and thought that this would probably be a great little community. I have a question for you guys. If you were to come to a community like this, purchase a home, and start doing your work to it to find out that your neighbor, whom works for the city, is allowed to harass, have the police department strong- strong-arm you, and prevent you from being able to use portions of your property for a while, and then continue to harass you with surveillance cameras and calling other city officials to be knocking at your door every few months because she didn't get her way, and have basically items stolen from your property because they have a picture of themselves in front of the fence, which is what exactly happened to me. I purchased my property to find out later that my neighbor works for the city. When we had our property surveyed, she removed the lace from the survey company after the markers were identified and filled in the holes, and her husband, whichever one. When we went to go find them and move our fences, I was told by the police department until I actually had the paperwork, because it was the weekend, that I had to put the fence back up on my property. We did that. We got the paperwork. We got the building permits so that we could do what we needed to do. And again, the police department comes out. I was, I was sitting on the ground when four officers allowed them to steal items nine- off my fence, nine foot into my property with no proof other than what they might have had on their phone. They have, they presented no proof that they owned anything. I had the surveys. I had the permits. And then I was told that I could come into the police department, the department of which I'm having the problems with, which is a very daunting task, to be able to go in and wonder if you're safe. In these scenarios, how would you feel on this when you have ordinance officers showing up for little to nothing just because somebody can see over your fence into your property? I get told that we can't do anything about that. Go ahead and file a restraining order or a stalking order, which I did do. And I was told because there was not an actual threat, there was nothing that they would do. So I come to you. Please tell me who protects me and my property and who do I go to to feel safe in this community?
That would be the, the police department, please.
That has not happened yet. I have had to file complaints on officers for standing over me, armed individuals, while they removed property that was affixed to my land. So how do you feel safe with that? How do, how do I let the, the rest of the community know that if you're facing a city employee that there's pretty much nothing you can do? Because that's what I've been told.
I'm sure the police investigated everything, all your, from your comments. From what I read, I know I've talked to the chief and he investigated all your, your, your allegations.
All of my allegations? I have video of the police department helping him remove items off my fence. So is that not considered a theft allegation? Is that not worth?
Well, I don't know all the details on that, so I can't really answer.
That's why I'm coming to the city council is because I'm not getting any answers.
Does that help?
And if this was your property, who would you go to?
I'd go to the chief of police.
I did that. I filed the complaints. And six months later, I get another city official, I get the ordinance officers at my door again with another supposedly anonymous complaint of something that nobody else can
The chief of police is the, you know, he's the, he's the chief of the police, so he, you know, he's the one I would go to. And, you know, he works for a city administrator, Will Black, and then, then myself.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
There any other members of the public that would like to make any comments? See none, we'll move on to item two, approval of license and bonds. We have none. Next, item three, introduction of ordinances and resolutions. A, ordinance amending and restating Chapter 16A, the zoning regulations of the City of Hazsville, Kansas, and amending the official zoning map or maps of the city to reflect such amendments, all pursuant to the zoning regulations of the city.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On December 12th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to amend Section 202 and Section 400 of the zoning regulations. The memo before you states the options you have to take on this item, and I'm asking for a motion to approve the ordinance, and I can stand for any questions you may have.
Councils have any questions? Councilmember Crum?
No questions. I'll just make a motion that we approve the ordinance amending and restating Chapter 16A, the zoning regulations of the City of Hazsville, Kansas, and amending the official zoning map or maps of the city to reflect such amendments, all pursuant to the zoning regulations of the city as presented.
Second. The motion is second to approve the ordinance as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
All right, next we have item four, notices and communications. A, gathering body announcements. Councilmember Crum?
Things going on at the library. Fourteenth of tomorrow, there'll be a genealogy group meeting at two o'clock on Wednesday, so the fifteenth will be the next Lego Club meeting, and that's at four o'clock. On the sixteenth, which is Thursday, there'll be the Parents' Teacher Storytime at 10:30, like, is held every Thursday, so just schedule that. On the twentieth, which is Martin Luther King Junior Day, the library will be open on that day, just so everybody knows. The twenty-third, at 6:15, there's going to be some Girl Scouts that are going to be touring the library. And the twenty-fifth, at noon, is the Friends of the Library are having a potluck. The twenty-ninth, they'll be celebrating Kansas Day. And the next library board meeting is on the thirtieth. And then the quilters always meet in the community room on Monday and Thursday mornings, and the crochet and knitting groups meet on Tuesday afternoons. That's what's going on at the library.
All right, thank you. Any other council members have updates or announcements? Well, the, already the senior center announcements. So some upcoming special events, line dancing every Wednesday at 3:00 PM. The January dinner is this Friday at 6:00 PM. Thoropathy presentation, January 14th. Paint Party, January 18th. Create Better Health Program, January 24th and the 31st. Some reoccurring events, coffee and conversation, dominoes and cards, crafts, bingo, bunco, chair yoga, well rep, Alzheimer's support group. So the hustle numbers, December of last year, last, no, last month, number of rides, 284 compared to 194 the previous year, and new registered riders, five compared to the previous year. Just one thing of a note, later on you'll see the, we have different annual reports. So there's a senior center annual report in your packet coming up. So the, I just want to mention that last year we had, or 2023, there were 512 members, and this last year there were 572 members compared to a couple of years ago, right around the mid-300. So there's a significant increase in membership in the senior center. So glad to see that. All right, next we have B, the Cedric County Fire Department Station 34 Monthly Report. It's in your packet. Item C, Economic Development Quarterly Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your package you'll find the combined fourth quarter and 2024 Economic Development Report. However, I would like to take some time to mention a few key business resources available on the Business Development webpage, just in case you're asked. As I search for new businesses, or as I search for opportunities for new and existing businesses that I'm working with, I do add to the list of resources so that way other businesses can benefit from that available information. So some of that information includes the three dining incentives that we have here in Hazsville, the Kansas resources for small businesses, and a section for childcare providers for various organizations. Additionally, and most recently, veteran resources has been added for both new and existing business owners. And then switching back to the report, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Danielle? All right, thank you. All right, next we have the next four reports, the Park Board Annual Report, the Police Department Annual Report, Recreation Department Annual Report, and the Senior Center Annual Report are in your packets. Item five, old business is none. Item six, other business. A, selection of president council.
Good evening. I will take nominations now for president of council for this year. And as a reminder, Dale Thompson is the current president, or Dale Thompson is currently president of council.
Can I nominate Mr. Benner?
Any other? Then Benner is president of council by affirmation.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Did I get a raise?
All right, next we have item B, consideration of agreement with McDonald Teaker PC regarding Prosecution Services. So Josh is, he was doing both, the city attorney and prosecution. So we are asking for, to do the prosecution with McDonald Teaker PC. Any questions? Anybody like to make a motion? Councilmember Benner?
I'll make a motion. We approve the agreement with McDonald Teaker PC regarding Prosecution Services for the city.
Second. Motion on second to approve the agreement with McDonald Teaker PC for Prosecution Services. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Next we have item C, consideration of agreement with Mentor and Pollock or City Attorney Any questions? Councilmember Crum?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement with Mentor and Pollock LC regarding City Attorney Services, Services less Prosecution Services.
Second. So we have a motion on second to approve the agreement with Mentor and Pollock LC regarding the City Attorney Services less Prosecution Services. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Next, item D, consideration of agreement with Hartstone regarding concrete crushing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have accumulated approximately 20,000 tons of asphalt and concrete debris in our recycling center. We have negotiated an agreement with Hartstone Incorporated to crush both piles into an aggregate material. We would then retain 2,000 tons while Hartstone Incorporated would keep the remaining aggregate. This agreement provides value to the city by reducing the costs while securing an amount for us to use for future projects. Therefore, I'm requesting approval of the bid from Hartstone Incorporated in the amount of $13,060. Stand for any questions you may have.
Councilmember Crum?
Guess I'm curious, how's that going to work? I mean, are they going to, will the aggregate end up being where the stuff's piled at now?
That's what we did last time, yeah.
When's the last time we did this?
I would say about seven, eight years ago?
Okay, I was going to say, because I don't remember doing this before. And we're keeping how much of it?
2,000 tons. So to compare that, like, a large dump truck we have can haul about 15 to 20 tons. So they still, we would still have a considerable amount, and we don't use it too very often
Any further questions? Councilmember Benner?
If there's no other questions, I would make a motion that we approve the agreement with Hartstone for concrete crushing.
Second.
We have motion on second to approve the agreement with Hartstone regarding the concrete crushing as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Next we have item E, consideration of lease agreement with Twin Valley Communications regarding a communications pole.
Before you tonight is a proposed lease agreement with Twin Valley Communications. Twin Valley Communication has requested a six-foot by six-foot section of land at the city's well field located at the intersection of 79th and West Street. This would be the northwest, northwest section of this. This leased space will be used to install an 85-foot antenna tower. I've included design drawings and a picture of an existing tower of similar design in your packet. In exchange for leasing this space, Twin Valley Communications will provide free internet service to City Hall and the Public Works Facility. We also have Butch Mitchell here representing Twin Valley, if you have any technical questions that I cannot answer.
Councilmember Gordon?
So Tony, is this the one we were going to put back here, or moving there, or is this another one?
A totally different one.
Totally different, yeah.
Councilmember Crum?
I know this is just the drawing, is it going to be fenced in and stuff?
Yeah, in the, in the lease it talks about a six-foot chain link fence.
Councilmember Benner?
There are no guy wires to this?
No, it's a freestanding tower. So Tony, is it kind of like the one that we proved out here? Just taller?
No. There's a pitch, uh, how'd you have the picture?
Well, because it was a freestanding one, too, with no guy wires, yeah.
Picture's on page 203.
Yeah, I was looking at it. I was just trying to think what the one we had approved out here.
Just a single monopole?
Yeah. For the ladder.
Yeah, this one out here would look like the one silver by White Horse.
So I'm just curious, for, for an 85-foot freestanding pole with no guy wires on it, does that have some kind of really deep concrete footing under it or something? Yes, yes. They, they're going to, of course, it goes six, six foot deep, and then, of course, concrete structure around it.
Councilmember Crum?
If there's no more discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the lease agreement with Twin Valley Communications regarding the communications pole as presented.
Second. We have motion on second to approve the lease agreement with Twin Valley Communications, Communications regarding the communications pole as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum? Yes. Thank you.
All right, next we have item seven, Department of Reports. A, Administrative Services.
I don't have anything.
B, City Clerk.
Good evening. City offices will be closed Monday, January 20th, for Martin Luther King Junior Day. If you have any water or sewer emergencies, please call the non-emergency line, 529-5912. Thank you.
All right, next we have item C, Police Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight's visiting officer is Lieutenant Crofts. He's out there, he is our patrol section supervisor. He's in charge of patrol section and takes care of all that, so he's normal here during the day. Also, just wanted to remind everybody, since it is cold outside, you know, the reminder on that one. But it is cold outside, so be careful warming up vehicles, don't leave vehicles unattended and running. You're just inviting trouble if you do that. People can come by and steal them fairly easy. People with remote starters, a little bit different because they can't just get in and take off in your car, but just be mindful of that, don't leave your car out there for a long time, and make sure you're paying attention. And of course, slow down when there's slick stuff on the streets, even though Tony's crew does an excellent job of keeping those cleaned up around here, as I say, so that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next we have item D, Public Works. Tony?
Just ditto what he said, other than that I have nothing.
Right, I know I told you this morning, but I always hear a lot of great compliments as far as how good you guys do, your road crew does, cleaning the roads.
They were cleaning up the, the, what do you call them?
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks this morning, when I went by.
All right, next we have item E, Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our youth baseball and softball registration will begin on February 3rd. And we're currently taking registrations for youth soccer, our mom prom event, a new event on February 8th, doubles pickleball tournament on February 15th, and our Shamrock Shuffle 5K and one-mile run walk that'll be in Doran Park on, in March. Put another plug in, again, this last year we were awarded to be able to be Silver Sneakers and renew active facility at the Activity Center. So patrons who are over 65 years of age, who qualify for Medicare insurance or have the Tivity Health Plan, can get a free membership to the Activity Center. Stop by and see us, we'll get you to take care of it.
Please, Rob. Next we have item eight, appointments. A, Municipal Judge, Terry Bill. Councilmember Benner?
Make a motion, we approve the appointment of Terry Bill for municipal judge.
Second.
We have motion on second to approve Terry Bill as municipal judge. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Item B, City Attorney, Josh Pollock. Councilmember Crum?
I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment of Josh Pollock as City Attorney.
Second.
Motion on second to approve Josh Pollock as the City Attorney. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum? Yes.
Next, item C, City Prosecutor, Matthew Gorney. Councilmember Benner?
Make a motion, we approve the appointment of Matthew Gorney for City Prosecutor.
Second.
Yeah, motion on second to approve Matthew Gorney as the City Prosecutor. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum? Yes.
Item D, Chief Administrative Officer, Will Black. Councilmember Crum?
I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment of Will Black as Chief Administrative Officer.
Second.
We have motion on second to approve Will Black as the Chief Administrative Officer. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum? Yes.
Item E, Deputy Administrative Officer, Georgie Carter. Councilmember Benner?
I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment of Georgie Carter for Deputy Administrative Officer.
Second.
We have motion on second to approve Georgie Carter as a Deputy Administrative Officer. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Item F, City Treasurer, City Clerk, Angie Fulton. Councilmember Crum?
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment.
Whoa, wait. My screen just went blank. Angie Fulton for.
City Treasurer.
City Treasurer.
City Clerk.
Here we go. Angie Fulton for City Treasurer, City Clerk.
Second.
We have motion on second to approve City Treasurer, City Clerk, Angie Fulton. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bender?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Item G, Chief of Police, Jeff Whitfield. Councilmember Rarden?
I make a motion to appoint Jeff, Jeff Whitfield as Chief of Police.
Second.
We have motion on second to approve the Chief of Police, Jeff Whitfield. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bender?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Item H, Public Works Director, Tony Martinez. Councilmember Crum?
I make a motion that we approve the appointment of Tony Martinez as Public Works Director.
Second.
We have motion on second to approve the Public Works Director, Tony Martinez. Any, any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bender?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Item I, Recreation Director, Rob Arneson. Councilmember Bender?
Make a motion that we approve Rob Arneson for Recreation Director.
Second.
We have motion on second for the Recreation Director, be Rob Arneson. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bender?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Congratulations, you've all been appointed for another year. All right, next we have item nine, executive session, we don't have any scheduled. Item ten, review of expenditures. We have none. Item eleven, consent agenda, we have several items on that consent agenda. Councilmember Crum?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bender?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Next, item twelve, council items. A, council concerns. Any councilmembers have a concern? Councilmember Crum?
Everybody's already been talking about, Tony, your crew does a great job on the streets. I'm curious, do we have anything on the books for the, the businesses we have in town that clean off their drives, maybe haven't cleaned off, and then there's four-foot piles left at the ends of the sidewalks? Are they supposed to clean them? Do we have anything already on the books saying that those need to be cleaned off?
So there's something in city code that sidewalks should be clear, clear path. We're even guilty at ourselves during a storm, you know, worried about getting the roads safe and passable, so we even pushed like on Delos there by Nelson, a lot of that was us. We went back after the fact, we were going to plan on doing that last week, then Mother Nature decided to give us another six inches, so we waited till this morning, like Councilman